Our first item is special presentations, but I don't think we have any this evening, Chief. It's usually you guys, so.
It happened tonight.
Perfect, alright, well, thank you. Although, I did see you got some sort of an award that was announced on...
Eleventh best.
Safest.
Eleventh safest.
Eleventh safest.
Yeah, eleventh safest town and something?
Yes, yeah, I can't remember exactly who it's from, I can't remember him, but a couple weeks ago, we get recognition for, uh, the eleventh safest city for over twenty dollars people.
Okay. Excellent.
We're keeping it good.
Well done, well, thank you. I remembered seeing it, so, um...
Cookie.
Jimmy's feisty today.
He's a little fired up. So, I don't, I don't see either Dennis or Shelley for our chamber and downtown business, um...
Jeff will step up.
Alliance meeting, Jeff, is that why you're here? You ready for the podium?
He's a member of both, so...
Wow!
It's your chance to say whatever you'd like to say.
Your fifteen minutes, pal, right here. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. This is general public comment, you all have three, three minutes to address counsel on anything not on the agenda tonight. If you're here for a specific item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment to specifically address that at that point, so if there, is there anybody here for general public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, oh, wait, reports items and such from council. So, time for, for folks in the audience, for our council members to kind of give you a brief update on, on what they've been up to since the last meeting and such, so, Mr. Dyak.
Uh, let's see, Wednesday, I was, I was down in Dr. Cog, we elected a new vice chair of the Finance and Budget Committee, we were thinking about elongating our lease, and we talked a little bit about other regional issues, so, I have that, and, um, Science and Culture Commission, Councilmember Holland and I had that Tuesday, and, um, great meeting, fantastic group of citizens who are helping us out. We had a report out on, um, the, a little bit of a preview of the Parker Arts Pace Center schedule, which is to be coming, I think, in late June. That's all.
Perfect. Renee?
I believe all of us participated in the strategic plan meeting for the Parker Authority for Reinvestment for Par, and that's all I have.
Mr. Rivera?
Uh, let's see, Wednesday morning, I had the partnership of Douglas County Governments, again, outstanding organization, is representatives from each of the municipalities, plus the county, school district, fire district, libraries, we all get together bimonthly and discuss what we've done, what we could do better, what the other ones shouldn't try. But, great things come out of that, uh, one thing, Douglas County Youth Initiative came out of that, I happen to, to chair that, um, we were presented with the Mental Health Initiative, which is a outstanding project the county is undertaking, and you'll definitely see some, some great signs of that with our PD and, and different things going forward. Thursday, I had Cherry Creek Water Basin Quality Authority, which is fabulously full of acronyms, and, uh, it was great, and then Friday was St. Patty's, and here I am. No, um, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No, actually, Saturday, I just want to throw this out there, because I thought it was outstanding, um, Saturday, we had, uh, my neighborhood has a little cruiser ride, um, once a month or so, we all get together and we get out on our bikes, and we put the kids in front of us, this is a nighttime ride, and we put the kids in front of us, and then the adults ride our cruisers behind them, and we came to the intersection, um, well, came to the intersection of Idlewild and Canterbury Parkway, and there's probably twenty, twenty-five kids on little bicycles, and then there's twenty adults behind them, and we're trying to figure out how we're gonna press this flashing light to get across this intersection, to get to the other side of the, the neighborhood, and, uh, as we're sitting there figuring this out, a, a Parker police officer, patrolman pulls up in his car, and without even hesitation, turns his lights on behind to stop traffic, and kind of waves us through in the window, and didn't know, you know, who I was, or who we were, or whatnot, but just stopped traffic right there, so all of us could go across the intersection. And I just thought that that was great, that without even hesitation, he decided to do that, and got us all across the intersection safely, so, another kudos, small kudos to Parker PD.
Excellent. Amy?
Well, being last, Councilman Dyak and Councilwoman Williams already covered what I did last week, so, we do have a transportation meeting on Wednesday this week, here at Town Hall at 6:00 PM, and that's a committee that's comprised of people from RTD, the county, and several citizens throughout the town of Parker, and it's just another great, um, way to have citizens voice the need that we do have for a call and ride and RTD services. That's all I have right now.
Super, alright, um, next item is our consent agenda, these are items that are considered to be routine, and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. That being said, council, I would need a, a motion to approve consent to Jada items A through K.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Josh and a second from Amy, all in favor, I guess, do a voice vote, Jim? No.
Have you tried? Okay.
Holy crap.
Look at that.
Motion passes unanimously, by some stroke of fluke luck, the lights worked. Our town administrator has not made it down yet, so we will, uh...
There he is, he's right back.
Hey! Randy, I know we have our, the town administrator's report is posted monthly onto the town's website, filled with fantastic information, uh, anything that needs to be added to that, uh, this evening?
No, the latest, the latest one has just been posted out, thank you.
Perfect. Uh, next item, item eight A, um, there are two items on here, um, first is Resolution seventeen dash zero two two, which is a resolution to set forth town council's findings of fact and conclusions as to the eligibility of the Newland Gulch Boulevard property for annexation into the town of Parker, and ordinance number two dot two five zero, which is a bill for an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous incorporated territory known as the Newland Gulch Boulevard property located in Douglas County. And Ryan, are you taking that one?
Yes.
Alright, partner, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Martin, um, yes, this is a town council public hearing to consider the Newland Gulch property annexation. The strip of land being annexed this evening is located on the northwest corner of Main Street and Newland Gulch Boulevard, as shown here in red, the strip is just west of the Carousel Farms Single Family Residence Development that is currently under construction, as shown in yellow, uh, right here. So, the Carousel Farms Single Family Development is located on the northeast corner of Main Street, Newland Gulch Boulevard, as I mentioned, it's under construction, as part of the condition of approval of that development, the town required, as a condition of approval, that Carousel Farms improve the access point on Main Street through an expansion of right-of-way to align with the existing four-lane Newland Gulch Boulevard, uh, to the south. The additional right-of-way that is the subject of this annexation is necessary to construct the northerly extension of Newland Gulch Boulevard along the western boundary of Carousel Farms. The right-of-way was acquired from Riverside Baptist Church, uh, which is right, located right over here, by Sentry at Carousel Farms LLC, and was deeded to the town in August of 2016. It is currently located in unincorporated Douglas County, and therefore must be annexed to ensure the road is within town jurisdiction. And with that, uh, pretty straightforward, staff recommends approval of Resolution number seventeen dash zero two two, and ordinance number two point two five oh on second reading. With that, excuse me, I'll be happy to take any questions you have, and I apologize, I'm a little bit sick, but...
Any questions for Ryan, folks? With that, this is a, an ord, a public ordinance, so I will go ahead and, and, uh, open this up for public comment, if anybody would like to address counsel on this item, we'll open it up at 7:20 PM, anybody come forward, grab a cookie, talk about annexing property, and it's, no, okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:20, and any further comments or, we gotta do these in order, right, Jim, because we have to do the one and then the other, so, um, so I would need a, a motion on, on the resolution first, and then the ordinance second.
I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash zero two two.
Second.
Got a, a motion from Josh and a second from John, all in favor, or, sorry, council, please vote, now we can, ay, ay, ay. Motion passes unanimously, and then we need a, a separate motion on the ordinance itself.
I move to approve ordinance number two point two five zero on second reading.
Second.
Got a motion from Josh and a second from Renee, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Um, with that, thank you, Ryan. Next item, uh, who's present, Weldon, is it you, or Matt, or who? It's you, okay, um, this is the Tax and Fee Assistance Program for...
That's right, right there.
Ah, see? For ACG LLC, otherwise known as the Parker Tap House, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, um, so, we did have a tap application from the Parker Tap House folks, um, requesting tax and fee assistance on, uh, building permit fees and construction use tax, as well as sales tax. So, after evaluating and, uh, looking at what the cost of the public improvements are, they are adding to the project, including the ten-foot sidewalk between the schoolhouse and the distillery, giving access to that back parking lot to Main Street for pedestrians, as well as widening the sidewalk in front to match the eighteen-foot amenity zone downtown. Staff concluded that a combined maximum rebate of two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, um, would be eligible for this program, and that breaks down to sixty-four thousand dollars estimated, and construction use tax and permit fees representing fifty percent of those costs, the remaining one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars would come as a fifty percent rebate of sales tax over five years. Um, again, these are all our best estimates at this point, um, so the maximum per the agreement will be the two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars, and the maximum time period to get to that number is five years, so, they will be paid out, especially on the sales tax portion, based upon how they're actually, uh, paying sales tax, so, it's more of a percentage base and a pay for how you perform. Um, and again, this does meet the town goals identified in the town code for, uh, tap assistance, it creates new jobs, creates new sales tax, contributes to the diversity of jobs and employment opportunities, represents retail diversity, it is the redevelopment of a building in the town of Parker, and then it is, uh, enhancing a vibrant and unique downtown. Um, so, at this point, staff does recommend approval of the tax assist, tax and fee assistance program for ACG LLC, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
John?
Sorry?
Just kind of a related question, Weldon, what, what kind of timeline do we have for, for this establishment to be, doors open?
So, last we had heard, I tried to get an update today, but it is spring break and hard to get ahold of them, um, we were anticipating that they get their building permits submitted later half of March, we're looking at probably three months on that, depending on what those documents look like, it's hard to tell, once those come through, they should be, the building permits, they should be able to get their final approval for the SBA, and then we can close per the purchase and sale agreement conditions. And I believe they're estimating, uh, nine-month construction schedule, that's always weather permitting, but since we've had no moisture, it could be faster.
Josh?
Uh, could you just go into a little more detail about what it is they're doing for the citizens as far as that walk-through?
Correct, so, currently, right now, there is no straight access to Main Street from the parking lot behind the schoolhouse, um, so, we, as part of this construction, have required a ten-foot sidewalk be placed between the two buildings for public access, we will be, uh, we don't have the final designs, but it'll also be lit with string lighting overhead, and then the front area now has a narrow sidewalk in comparison to the, some of the newer development in downtown, that will be widened to eighteen foot, feet with lights and, um, street trees, like you see kind of in front of Pace and things like that, so matching and improving the sidewalks and the access, um, for the citizens of Parker, and, and those costs are estimated roughly around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for those.
Awesome, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? That being said, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:25, if there's anybody here to address counsel on this item, please come on down, grab a cookie, and let us know your questions or thoughts. Everybody's firmly entrenched in their seats this evening, um, so, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:25, and I'll entertain any further questions or motion, please.
I move to approve the tax and fee program assistance agreement for ACG LLC.
Second.
Got a, a motion from Josh and a second from Renee, council, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Weldon, alright. What in the world?
My PDFs are freaking out.
Is it the...
Yours?
Yeah, is that right? Keystone, okay. Um, next item, apologies, is item eight C, um, which is a First Amendment to the Tax and Fee Assistance Program for Parker Keystone, and, Matt, the floor is yours, partner.
Good to see us all tonight.
I guess so.
Mayor Potem, members of the council, thank you for being here tonight, uh, we bring before you a request to amend a tap agreement, tax and fee assistance agreement between the town and Lincoln Development LLC for the Parker Keystone project, that the town originally approved on April eighteenth, twenty sixteen. As part of the developer's obligation, in that original tax and fee assistance agreement, the, the developer is required to have one or more certificates of occupancy issued by December thirty-first of twenty seventeen, and probationary acceptance of all public Due to numerous developer delays, design complications, issues related to annexation, and other design issues, they, these have resulted in delay of construction by almost one year, and may actually prevent successful completion of the condition precedent that's contemplated in Section Three of that tap agreement. So, as a result, the developer has requested that the town amend the agreement to extend that completion date out to June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, essentially an eighteen-month extension. All other aspects of that agreement will remain unchanged. As part of, of our consideration of this extension, staff has met with the developer to ensure that the end-users that were identified during the incentive process remain contractually bound to the project, and that additional negotiations are in, are underway to not only find additional users, but if, if in fact necessary, to replace those who were originally bound to the project. I do want to remind council that the completion date that was set forth in the original agreement is not meant to be punitive in nature and is arbitrarily constructed based on the information at the time of that agreement, so extending the completion date doesn't disadvantage either party, and in fact ensures an orderly financing and completion of the project. With that, staff recommends the approval of the amendment extending the tap agreement deadline to June, to June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt, any questions for Matt? Ladies and gents? Alright, um, that being said, I will go ahead and open us up for public comment at 7:29 PM, for anybody wishing to address counsel on this item, please come on down, once again, firmly entrenched in seats. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:29, and any further comments or emotion, please.
I move to approve the tax and fee program assistance agreement amended, amendment extending the deadline to June thirty, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Motion from Amy and a second from Renee, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, on to item number nine, which is ordinance number three dot one four seven dot six, which has been continued from February sixth of twenty seventeen, continued to, Jim, walk me through this, continued to May fifteenth of twenty seventeen, this is a bill for an ordinance to amend Section thirteen dot zero seven dot zero three zero of the Parker Municipal Code concerning, concerning residential roadway buffering standards, so you're asking us, at this point, to continue it until May fifteenth, or?
That is correct.
Okay, so, just for the public, there are times where something may not be, uh, ready to come in front of, of council, so, the applicant may ask for, which in this case, I think is the town, um, for an extension to a date certain, which in this case would be May fifteenth, um, so, council, I would need a motion, uh, to complete that, please.
I move to continue ordinance number three point one four seven point six on second reading to May fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Motion from John and a second from Amy, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, the item is continued until May fifteenth. Next up, item number ten, which is ordinance number three dot zero one dot one one one, which is a bill for an ordinance to amend Section thirteen dash zero one dash dot zero four zero of the Parker Municipal Code concerning resubmittals and expiration of approvals. And Jim, who's, is that Karen? The floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, uh, we are going to be taking a look at ordinance number three dot oh one dot one one one, this is a bill for an ordinance to amend Section thirteen oh one oh four oh of the municipal code concerning resubmittals and expirations of approvals. The intent of this land development ordinance amendment is to extend the time an approved site plan or use by special review application remains in effect before expiring. The proposed ordinance will extend the duration of the approved site plan or use by special review application from six months to twelve months. Currently, the LDO provides that site plan and use by special review approvals remain in effect for six months from the date of approval, with the opportunity for a ninety-day extension, if granted by the planning director. The approval expires if the applicant has not obtained a grading or building permit within this time. If a project approval expires, the applicant must resubmit an application and start the process over, sometimes at considerable expense. This proposal recognizes that many development projects require greater than six months from approval to start of construction. This proposal will extend the duration of a site plan and use by special review approval to twelve months. And finally, this provision for a ninety-day extension is proposed to remain unchanged. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend town council approve ordinance three dot oh one dot one one one, a bill for an ordinance to amend Section thirteen oh one oh four oh of the Parker Municipal Code concerning resubmittals and expiration of approvals. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am, any questions? Y'all?
Just for my clarification, after twelve months, uh, we can offer a ninety-day extension?
Correct.
And then after fifteen months, then, do they, is it null and void, they have to start over? Okay.
Renee?
Um, can you give us some idea of what percentage of applications get extended currently, and what percentage of applications expire?
Uh, no. Would be the answer, um, I've never had one, well, I've had two, I guess, in the year that I've been here, be extended, so, I don't know, two out of fifty, I don't know, probably. It's funny that we're doing this for only two out of fifty.
Mr. Fusa, care to expand?
When, when, when you're the director of planning, they get to put you on the spot.
So, it, for Carolyn, uh, in her year, it's two or three out of fifty sounds about right, um, including a firing range application that we've had, uh, before us, and we've tried to keep on life support if and until it, it can be funded and constructed. The, uh, the duration of approvals, in terms of the, the running of the duration of approvals, it certainly isn't the majority of applications, it's, it's limited, I would say, ten to twenty percent of all applications, even in this hot, strong economy, take quite some time to go from approval through, uh, development of construction plans, and then actual start of construction, it's more of just a timing effort, even for the most motivated developers and the best professional teams hired by developers, uh, doing all of the civil construction plans, the building construction plans, wrapping up financing, hiring contractors, general contractors, staging, and then getting to construction, just takes time logistically. So, we end up, I would say that I do a handful of, every quarter, I do roughly five or six extension letters, uh, for active approvals, um, within the powers granted to me under the ordinance, and it's simply a matter of recognizing that, um, these projects take some time, uh, it adds an element of uncertainty, uh, to an applicant and a developer, um, in their process, uh, and it also affects some of our mom-and-pop businesses and homeowners, uh, who have smaller projects, whether it's a tenant fit-out, a building expansion, or even a home improvement, um, it often takes these mom-and-pop applicants some time to go through, so, this simply recognizes the reality of the timing and gives, um, applicants more time to get their house in order, get their work done, and get to construction, without the jeopardy of potentially losing their approval, uh, or the inconvenience of having to request extensions, uh, many times, they don't even know to do that, and we end up chasing applicants, uh, and they're thankful we do that, uh, but it's inefficient, and it adds uncertainty.
So, what happens if standards change in the meantime?
The applicants are entitled to rely upon their original approval, uh, in terms of the entitlement and the standards as to design and, and the development proposal.
That answered your question, any other questions for John while we've got him on the spot?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:36 PM, if anybody would like to come down for public comment. Dwayne, atta boy, it's just an excuse to grab a cookie, we know, if you could go ahead and, uh, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Dwayne Hyman, one seven one zero zero Clubhouse Drive, Parker, eight oh one three eight. I just, I understand the extending it, but as someone who's going through this process, if all your ducks are in a row, when you come to this process, it shouldn't take you longer than six months, and then you have ninety more days, I don't understand why you really need to extend it to a year and then add another ninety days. If you're gonna extend it to a year, I would propose, we get rid of the ninety days, you're giving somebody fifteen months to get their ducks in a row that should have been already in a row before they started the process, and as a person going through the process, that's required when you make the application process started, that you know what you're doing, that you have your financing, that you have your permits, and all that, so, extending it from six months to a year and then adding another ninety days, that's just kind of like waiting stuff out to see what's gonna change and what you're gonna get away with, that's just my personal opinion, I don't, I'm, I could understand a year, but then giving them another ninety days, that's kind of like, go ahead, screw off some more, I'm sorry, but, you know, that's what I see it as, that's all I got, thanks for the cookie.
Thanks, Dwayne.
You forgot to start this timer.
Well, I, I was gonna just, you know, there's been so much competition for the mic tonight, I thought I could probably let that slide. Uh, anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:38 PM, and any further comments or...
A comment, if you will, I, I did a little bit of talking about this, and, and I, I think that what we're after here is a more thought-out plan, giving some people, they feel a little rushed at six months, so in the long run, it's gonna save staff time if they, if they have a, a little bit longer than six months to comprise, and as far as the ninety days, there's always contingencies, there's always surprises, and, and this, the big picture is, we are out to save everybody dollars, the citizens, out to save the citizens' dollars, we're also out to save the builders' dollars, because, to be frankly, you know, to be honest, if they spend more money, then the buyers of those properties then spend the money, so, I mean, the, the goal is to save everybody money, and if we can do that on our side, then I think that that's the whole idea of this ordinance.
With that, I would need a, a motion and a second.
I move to approve ordinance number three point zero one, point, I'm on the wrong ordinance, sorry.
Renee?
You're right.
Oh, you're right.
Hope you're good.
Three point zero one point one 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 on second reading.
Second.
Got a motion from Josh and a second from Renee, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, with that, we are at item number eleven, um, which is ordinance one dot four eight zero dot two, a bill for an ordinance to approve the Second Amendment for the sale and purchase of land by and between the town of Parker and ACG LLC concerning the GYM property, and GYM is G-Y-M.
It is, and...
And, Weldon, good to see you again.
Thank you, um, good to see you again as well, um, this is the Second Amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for the Tap House and Distillery, it was originally approved, um, June sixth, twenty sixteen, we have extended it, uh, one time in February, or no, I'm sorry, I just made that up, uh, we did extend it previously to March thirty-first, twenty seventeen, um, the Second Amendment, we are requesting to extend that deadline for, so we can close to no later than July thirty-first, twenty seventeen, the reason, the reasons for that are, there were specific closing contingencies that needed to be completed, uh, I brought those up briefly, uh, before, but just to remind you, uh, the outstanding items are, uh, approval and receipt of building permits, they need that prior to getting their final stamp of approval from the SBA, once those are complete, the financing's... Once those are complete, the financing's good with the SBA and we have building permits, then we can go ahead and schedule closing. So, staff does recommend approving the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement and Ordinance 1.480.2, and any questions, I am happy to answer.
Any questions for Weldy, folks? John?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I will go ahead and open it up to public comment at 7:41 PM. Anybody wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:42 PM. And any further comments or a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance Number 1.480.2 on second reading.
Second.
Go ahead, a motion from Renee and a second from Amy, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And our last item of the evening is item number 12. This is ordinance 9.252.1, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas regarding the design, construction, and maintenance of Belford Avenue, and in parentheses, Peoria Street to Com Park Village South Improvements Project. Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim and members of council. Again, this item is an intergovernmental agreement between the town and Douglas County as related to a section of Belford Avenue that actually is within the county's jurisdiction, but is being constructed as part of Com Park Village filing number one, which is a development within the town's jurisdiction. The IGA includes provision relating to the design, construction, and maintenance of Belford Avenue, and it was originally approved by council on April 4th of 2016 last year, and it required that the construction of Belford Avenue commence by December 31st, 2016, which it has not, which is why we're here this evening. So, this was due primarily to some funding issues associated with the public improvements and the financial security associated with those improvements. The applicant has requested that town council extend the approval date for the Meyer Development Plaid associated with Com Park Village filing number one, which council did as part of the consent agenda this evening. This item is to amend the IGA to extend the construction start date to December 31st, 2017, this year, and this should allow the developer or the applicant additional time to secure the necessary funding. The applicant has indicated that they're anticipating getting under construction with the development and the roadway by this spring, possibly this summer. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners approved this IGA amendment at their board meeting last week, and town staff recommends approval of ordinance 9.52.1, amending the IGA. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody have questions for Tom on this? I know we've seen this before. Renee?
I just have a clarification, because there's a typo in our book, I believe. It is 9.252.1, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:44 PM. Anybody having questions or comments on this, please come down, grab a cookie, make yourself at home. Dwayne, second cookie? Dwayne, no, he's shaking his head. Don't want to add another mile to that run tonight, partner. With that, I'll close public comment at 7:45 PM. Any further comments from council or a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance Number 9.252.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion from Renee and a second from Amy, all in favor? Or, excuse, jeez. Council, if you could vote, please.
It's fun being in that seat.
That's why I get the big money. Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll go ahead and recess back into our executive session at 7:45 PM. For everybody else here today, thank you very much. Jeff, your ice cream.